I would like to invite our esteemed representative, the honorable Margaret Lucas, to the podium. He's going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and education. Please stand if you choose to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the distinguished Board of Aldermen. It's such a pleasure to be back home and brings back such pleasant memories. And then to have the honor to pray to our God, I count it a blessing. Would you bow your hands, please? Our Father and our God, we thank thee for this day. We thank thee for the citizens of this great town of Spring Lake. We ask you to bless those who are in leadership positions and give them the wisdom and the knowledge to do this town and its people justice. Do these things for us, kind Father, and we'll forever give thy name the praises. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It is always a pleasure when we have Representative Lucas and his beautiful wife in the building with us. We will now move on to Agenda Item Three additions and deletions. Alderman Fosios?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add interlocal cooperation agreement for the collection of taxes between Cumberland County and the town of Spring Lake.
And that will be added under new business, and we will add that to Item G. Mayor, please.
I'd like to make a motion to add some presentations to Pink Diamonds 5K Cancer on your 7C.
So we will add that one to Presentations?
Yes.
And this is for the Delta Cancer Walk.
Pink Diamonds.
Pink Diamonds, sorry. Pink Diamonds. This will be 7C. Are there any other additions or deletions? I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda with addition to 7C, the Pink Diamonds presentation, and 9G Cumberland County Tax Collection Agreement. Alderman Cooper?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda instead of changes.
Mayor, please. Any discussion?
All of us up to click right into a more down?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I'm sorry, it just looks so good to look out over this audience and see how many people are in these seats. It just feels good, so thank you guys for coming. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent items. That would be the draft minutes of the May 22nd, 2023 Work Session Meeting and the military and veterans advisory committee applications. Our committees are really busy and loaded. Alderman Lachman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items for tonight's meeting.
Mayor, or excuse me, Alderman Fosios?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Lachman?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much on the Military Veterans Affairs Committee. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Robert Kennedy. He's the commander of Post 9103 here in Spring Lake. It's on the Harnett County side, but BFW 9103 does wonderful things throughout the community. They have lots of events to support the veterans. They're coming to the table. They want to be part of this committee. They want to serve the military and veterans personnel here. So I'd like to welcome Robert Kennedy, commander of BFW 9103.
Awesome. Welcome, Mr. Kennedy. Alderman Fosios?
How many vacancies do you have left on that committee?
Alderman Fosios, we have one position left available on this, and then we will be further.
Is that for organization or individual member?
The organization we have is 4542. That's just came off suspension and will probably be coming to the table as well with Commander Kennedy.
Awesome.
So she's putting in her application. If she's watching on YouTube tonight, that'd be good to know.
Awesome. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will now move on to public comments. Now for public comments, please remember that you only have three minutes for your speaking, and the board is not able to reply to your comments. So we can listen, but we can't get any answers from us at this moment. However, someone from our staff will reach out to you to respond to any questions that you may have. So our first public comment will be Andrea Williams from Silwet Firearms. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, business address, for the record.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Williams. My business's address is 1165 North Bragg Boulevard in the Southwind Plaza. So thank you, Mayor Anthony, and the Board of Aldermen for allowing me to, well, to speak this evening. I have done works throughout the years in the town of Spring Lake through my nonprofit organization, Blazing Beauties. But I am standing up here today to promote Silwet Firearms Training LLC, which is right here in Spring Lake. We do excellent work. And so we do have a community event that is for free. It is in support of the Sixth Annual National Train a Teacher Day. This will be on this upcoming Saturday from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we will have different courses, which will speak to the different kits that you have for first aid and rapid deployment kits, as well as stop the bleed training and countering the threat. I am standing here before you because although I do not reside in this community, I have invested in this community with my nonprofit organization doing the work over the years, as well as my baby Silwet Firearms Training LLC. And so I am hoping that I can align with the town of Spring Lake, the government, and the community members to come support these free events that speak to safety and how we will have better situational awareness. And that is all that I have. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we will have Ms. Frederick Sutherland. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Board, Aldermen, Mayor Anthony, and the citizens of this great town of Spring Lake. I think we have this opportunity to go and speak before you. I am invested in the town, having it for 44 years with property and as well as a dedicated servant of this great town of Spring Lake. I hold in my hand a letter from the North Carolina Department of State Treasures. In 2012, I was the first one they called about our tax dollars. Also, I have here 2019, 2017, and 2020 the letters that were sent to me when I called concerning our tax dollars. Since I only have three minutes, I have 10 points. I'll be back at the next meeting. At the last budget meeting, I am concerned about the increase in the water bill. The flat rate for 2021 is $2.88. That does not have anything to do with the water that you use, the tiers. 2022 to 2023, it went up to $3.55. The increase is just the flat rate of the water and sewer for the past two budget years, which equals a total of $6.43. That's just a flat rate. That does not include the tiers of most of the neighborhood. They use probably about 3,000 gallons. Then you start adding on to that. It says when you add to the tiers, some of the citizens' increase for the two years is going to be $15 and over, depending on how much you use. And I say that at the budget meeting, you also mentioned the increase in the budget. I don't know what some of the citizens are able to afford. I know we own a fixed income, and I do always look at our demographics. You also mentioned in the special meeting, the Inspection Department would only have two positions, Building Inspector, Inspector Supervisor, and to get rid of the Executive Assistant Position. Now, I have a question. I'm a little confused. And it says in the meeting, in my notes that I wrote here, I couldn't figure out the Code Enforcement Position. Would the Police Department be doing the Code Enforcement Position? As well as you stated, I want to thank all our first responders, and I've always thanked our workers here in this great town of Spring Lake. Also, you said that the Police Department's budget was 40% of the budget. That is one of, they have more employees with the Fire Department, and they didn't need a lieutenant. I feel like they need a lieutenant for our public safety. I feel like all positions, they had five positions. They had 19 once they dropped it down. They had 25 at one time they dropped down. I think they probably have 19. I have not checked. But I feel for our public safety, we need a lieutenant position.
Also, our special. It goes by so quickly, doesn't it?
Yes, anybody check that? It's been three minutes?
No.
Yes, ma'am, it has. I'm sorry.
Okay. Anyway, the water is going up. I think you all should be advocates for the citizens to make sure that you stand on behalf of the citizens.
That's your time, Ms. Sutherland.
Thank you, but I still feel that way.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to Agenda Item 7A. We have a proclamation from the National League of Cities. June is Small Cities Month. So each June, the National League of Cities celebrates all of the contributions of the small cities, towns, and villages across our country and the residents who live in this community. We are a small community, a mighty small community. And so we wanted to make sure that we honor the work that's done in our communities, the contributions that small communities provide to not just North Carolina, but to the country. And so we do have a proclamation here. Just because we have a pretty packed agenda tonight, I'm not going to read the proclamation, but it is posted on all of our social media outlets and our town website. So please look into the power of these small cities. We build small cities out of the backbone of America. And so again, we take time out tonight to honor them. We have, one of our Alderman women is on the league. She's definitely a tail jaw. Sometimes it gets confusing. National League of Cities Small Cities Council. So if you'd like to chime in and add to this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So Small Cities Council is an affiliate group of the National League of Cities, and they help us advocate for small cities, give resources for funding, because, you know, it's easier for the big cities. They have lots of this and everything. So they help us with funding. We have a direct representative who I get to talk to on a regular basis to see what type of needs we have, what our concerns are. And we just, it really helps because sometimes somebody in North Carolina may not have something going on that you do, like I was going to call him, somebody in Missouri. He had an issue going on. It was so much like us. And I was able to reach out to him and talk to him. So it really helps us make work and learn best practices across the whole country.
Awesome. So with that, we will move on to our next presentation. I love this topic. I love presentations because oftentimes they're filled with so many warm and fuzzies. And this is one of my favorites. So I will pass it off to Alderman Fosios to handle another item 7B.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so we're presenting the Yard of the Month for the month of June. Yard of the Month is an award that we give to our neighbors for the maintenance and the upkeep of their property in such a way that it beautifies the overall appearance of Spring Lake. So we recognize and honor our neighbors for this. The awards for this month are for Robert Moore. If you're here, raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry, subdivision Lisa Circle. Was that Woodland West?
Yes.
All right. Son Phillips. Dear Phillips. Park Johnson. And that's Odell Road. Paul and Anita Miller on Fifth Street. All right, let's give a round of applause to our neighbors. And if you'll join me up here. And the Appearance Committee members who are here, if you guys want to come on up for a picture.
I got you.
Oh.
Yeah.
He's not here.
Do you mind taking a picture?
Yeah, I got you.
Congratulations to all of our yard of the month. One day, we're going to be able to do one for just the board members. I mean, Margaret's going to win, but we're going to try.
He was not nodding this morning.
Unless he does my yard, I'm not. Awesome. Now we'll go on to 7C. Ms. Diamond Bryant, if you'd like to approach the podium, tell us about Pink Diamonds.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Anthony, and to the Board of Aldermen. Again, my name is Diamond Bryant. I am the CEO and founder of Pink Diamonds Nonprofit Cancer Organization. Just to give you a little bit about Pink Diamonds' history. Pink Diamonds was founded in 2016 after I had my own personal battles with breast cancer twice. Once in 2012, and then again in 2015. So after my second bout with cancer, because I was given a five-month period to live the second time, I was compelled to start a nonprofit to allow other people to be educated, to advocate for other people, and to also offer them the opportunity and financial and emotional support to be able to get second opinions. So the mission of Pink Diamonds, the mission of Pink Diamonds is to dedicate years to motivate others, nurture and nurture survivors. And we would like to do that, before I start, let me go back. I said thank you to you all. However, I'm bringing ingredients on behalf of Pink Diamonds, and I left that out. So I want to make sure that I do not leave out my organization, and thank you all for allowing us to be here, the Board, Mayor Anthony, and also to the citizens of the town of Spring Lake. So our goal again here is to, we were looking to have a community 5K, also a community festival here in the town of Spring Lake. This will be Pink Diamonds' 7th 5K. Although this 5K has run for the last six years, it is normally held in South Carolina on different college campuses. However, we would like to have our first inaugural Cancer Walk and Community Festival here in the town of Spring Lake. We would love to have the opportunity to bring more positive awareness to the town of Spring Lake, to add on to all of the wonderful things that you all are doing already in the town of Spring Lake. It is our goal to bring the mammogram ban here, and we will be giving self screenings that day. And you will need to be insured. However, Pink Diamonds is going to be paying for a certain number of screenings for the citizens here in the town of Spring Lake who may not have insurance. So we want to bring that here again, as I said, and we also want to have a community festival afterwards so that we could talk about the importance of being healthy, talk about some of the things that we can do to be aware and to advocate for ourselves, most of all, whenever we're at these doctor's appointments. Because for me, had I taken that diagnosis that they gave me, I would not be able to stand here before you today. So it is our goal to have this 5K and Community Festival here. And with some of the proceeds from that, we would like to get back to the town to help with people who are going through a cancer diagnosis. And it doesn't have to be breast cancer, any form of cancer. We would like to help them with paying their utilities here if they are behind on bills or things like that. Those are things that my nonprofit offers. And we would love the chance to work with you all in the town of Spring Lake in our endeavors. Thank you all for your time.
Awesome. Is there, are there any questions from the Board? And I have a few. What dates are you looking at to do this Cancer Walk?
So we're looking at the date of September the 30th. And we're hoping for the timeframe from 8 until 12. And we want to be out of your hair by 1:00, everybody, vendors and all. And I'm sorry, I didn't say that. We do have opportunities for vendors to set up. We would like for this to be a community event, so anybody who wants to be in, they're welcome.
Any other questions from the Board? Alderman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. You took my first question. So do you have information about what it would cost to be a vendor?
Yes, ma'am. I do have that information for the vendors. So if it's going to be an information vendor, somebody who is just giving out information, there will not be a cost associated.
Okay.
If you will be selling items, there will be a cost associated with that. However, I am waiting for my Board to get back with me because we want to have a price that's going to benefit all and that's, that people can afford it to.
Okay, thank you. Well, you are coming in on a very, on the perfect time. We are actually tonight looking to approve our new special event permit. And so you have pretty to, the way things are going to be handled, especially with large-scale events of this magnitude. Ms. Patricia Moore, right here behind you. She is our planner, and she would be working with you for any special events, helping with permits, like those types of things. She can guide you in the right direction as she is, you know, the lead on the special event permit. So she definitely has all the answers when it comes to special events happening in Spring Lake. So that's your source right there, the pretty lady with the blue shirt on, Carolina Blue specifically. Awesome. Any other questions from the Board? Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. And I did not ask, we would like to, we have the media lined up to come out. We would like for Mayor Anthony, the Board of Aldermen, Chief Feldman, and Chief Williams. We would like for you all, we want to do photo ops, so we would like for when we cut that rhythm, we would definitely like for you all to be there and to welcome the citizens on that day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the process over. To go into our Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearings. We have BOA 230007, consideration for a special event or special use permit to allow billboards in C3 heavy commercial districts, on Bragg Boulevard, and Chris, it says Terry, but I'm going to forget you. Terry Camp-Harkins is the applicant. So Chris, if you want to approach the podium?
Are you?
Yeah, everyone.
Okay. You're the new board?
Welcome back, Chris.
Well, thank you. It's always a pleasure. My name's Chris Portman. I am a senior planner with the Planning Department for Cumberland County. Before you, this case, BOA 20230007. Applicant is local media outdoor. They are the owners of the billboard that is wanting to expand. A little background on the billboard. The Board of Adjustment approved the special use permit back in August 14th of 2017 to allow a special use permit for this. The various was also approved case P17-02-SL to allow a 13.77-foot setback from the existing structure where 50 feet is required, which was also approved by the Board of Adjustment in 2017 as well. But they are proposing now to just do a backside advertisement where the front is already taken. This is off the corner, kind of right off of South Bragg Boulevard and off the Main Street, right there at the corner. This is the existing and surrounding uses. As you can see, there's Fort Bragg, or Fort Liberty, sorry. On the left side of the property, or on the west side of the property, and there is a commercial surrounding the property. As you can see, C3 zoning is surrounding the property. Fort Liberty is on the west side. The RSN residential, but it is a couple properties over. This is the site plan. It's kind of hard to tell. It might be easier in the staff report. But the billboard is actually on the right side, right along the horizontal building there. There is a little note on the plan that does say proposed billboard sign. That's exactly where it's going to be. It's already an existing billboard. They're not proposing a new one, so they're just adding the backside, which is the expansion. This is the location of the billboard. This is the north view looking down Bragg Boulevard. This is the east view looking across the street. This is the south view looking down Bragg Boulevard as well. And this is the subject property there. You can see the billboard on the right side. The textual pictures are just more up-close versions of it. As you can see with the arrow on the left picture, that's the location proximity of where it is located on the site. The right is just an up-close image of it. These two pictures show the existing on the front-facing billboard, and then there's the picture on the bottom, which is the backside, which they are proposing to do. The billboard will be the exact same size. I don't believe they are proposing it to be any larger or smaller, so everything's going to be dimensional as what is currently on the front side. If you have any questions, I can answer them in the end of this room.
Are there any questions from the Board? Alderman Lachman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I got a question in regards to this. So as you are coming into Spring Lake, you see the billboard. But as you are coming down from the traffic circle, that, the backside, is where the...
Correct.
The backside is what they're looking to propose.
Yes.
And we've got free-flowing traffic, and we've got people coming down there, so...
Yes, I believe they should be able to see it from the circle there and coming out of Spring Lake. That would be worth paying bills for.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Fosios?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, do you know if this side is going to be digital?
I don't believe so. I believe that it should answer the question more than I should. But I don't believe so, believe so that it would be.
All right. There is on page two, at the bottom of the planning staff report. Wondering, I'm sure that's a typo, under minimum yard setbacks, states to propose daycare?
Yes. Sorry about that.
That has no material impact on this?
That, no, there will be no daycare on this property.
Okay. And then page three, the next page, NC... And then page three, the next page, uh N C D O T. Just checking that this meets the requirements of the outdoor advertising for N C D O T.
Uh yes, whenever we send this out to our review team, that is the comment that they gave us directly, so it is word for word, I made them up with it.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
Just by find, there is no daycare.
Thank you, Mayor. So I I I know I asked some questions prior to this meeting. Um is there anything that would allow them to make this uh digital? Uh would it ha- would it not have to be in the plans or would they be able to do?
Um I believe they would have to specify whether it's going to be digital or not because then I believe you would have specific. Performance and everything like that regarding light brightness or anything like that.
Okay, I just um that was that was one of the questions I asked and I just wanted to confirm that it would have to be something in there. Thank you. If there are no more questions, I will now declare that this public hearing is open. Uh and I'll ask if, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. You are released. If there's anyone here to speak uh in favor of this request, I ask that you approach the podium at this time. Again, if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this request, please approach the podium. Last time, is there anyone in here to speak in favor of this request? If not, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Please approach the podium. Is anyone here to speak in opposition, please approach the podium. Last call, not like at the bar though. Um if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this request, I ask that you approach the podium at this time. If there is no one to speak um for or against this public uh or against this request, I now declare that this public hearing is closed. Are there any questions, comments from the board? Awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh as my comment earlier in regards to decide the billboard is gonna be on. Um Chief Spelman, I'd like to ask you, uh if you done, if you seen this, if you know with the free flowing traffic that that enters onto Bragg Boulevard coming down Main Street. Uh with that billboard being placed there, how does that impacts one the fire or one of police departments? Uh with traffic because about seventy percent of the people free flow, the other thirty percent stop there. And so is that gonna create a a safety hazard? Is that gonna create issues with with traffic through that area?
Um I looked at some data and of course the numbers was relevant to low connecting area for accidents. Um the location of the billboard, I don't think it'd be that bad a problem. Just like getting a business if I had some projections, but I think it it'd work out in the long run.
Thank you. And that was also my question for the fire department as well. So Chief Williams?
Uh I don't accidents, I don't think would be a problem because my recreation uh recognition of where this thing turns at. By the time you're turning there, you you would almost have to look across to see it. If you're gonna see it anywhere, it would be at the roundabout and coming down. I don't think it will affect turning onto Boulevard at all. That's how I see it.
Especially with these businesses getting ready to come into there.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We have David on here for the budget, but that doesn't start until seven, Chris. So we're going to uh skip over B and continue on with this, the public hearing. We can go ahead and take care of. Um the one we just heard. So we'll move on to agenda item nine A and we'll circle back to eight B at seven P M. So now I will entertain a motion to approve or deny uh BOA twenty-two-three zero zero seven consideration of a special use permit to allow a billboard in. C three heavy commercial district, zero point four two plus or minus acres at four sixteen South Bragg Boulevard. Uh Terry Harkins, the applicant, local media outdoors is the owner. Alderman Cooper. So there's second, Mayor Proten? Is there any discussion? Alderman.
Mayor, I guess my concern here is is what are we looking at for Spring Lake? Are we looking to to incentivize the advertisement through there or are we looking to kinda keep a hometown feel with what we have in Spring Lake?
I don't know if we have control over what they put on that billboard as it is a commercial company. Uh is that correct?
Right, as as a one side of it, it's as you enter into Spring Lake coming from Fort Liberty where this will be traffic that's working on heading out of Spring Lake. That was just my question. Mark.
Please. Alright, um all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Alright, the motion carries uh four to one with Alderman Lackman uh voting against. We will now move on to. Agenda item eight or nine B, the draft ordinance, chapter two, administration, article six, business registration. And this will be presented by our interim town manager, Ms. Williams, and our police chief, Chief Spelman.
Come on up here, Chief. You wanna start or I?
Go ahead. You sit down.
Okay, you're up. You know what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, carry on.
Yeah, um based on that, for what's for that, I think it would be, you know, some for the law wants to take one, so we can do our routine checkups and making sure the park lot is open and clear. And no destruction of the park lot. And also, like I like, it's on the businesses as well. So those are purpose for us as a law wants to, you know, for the fires, be a little bit different because we got some inspections inside that can be still make sure that compliance were there as well.
The biggest thing, the biggest thing about this, uh when we used to have the business license, uh that we got rid of a while back. Um we used to know what's coming into town. Uh the biggest problem we have now for myself and and the fire chief and the police chief is. People who own these businesses or whatever, they'll throw somebody in a little quick. And the only reason we know they're in there is we'll go by one of the, you know, one of the police guys or fire guys go by and say, hey, is that is that supposed to be in there? And then they gotta come back and get a hold of it and then we gotta do a whole thing, this whole behind the scene kinda thing. With this, if we pass this, this will, when you come in, you have to register. And we know where who's coming in there, when they're in there, how they're in there. They have to be able to do this. And it's it's a low fee, but it just makes everything on the books for us to make sure there's nothing illegal is going in places that we don't need to go. Cause sometimes there's no telling what's going into some of these places.
That's true.
Any different on that? So that's basically it and that's it.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. One, who will be the custodian of this registration and upkeep?
That's gonna be Ms. Hickman. Come on. Or is it gonna be on a fee? Is it gonna be on a fee?
Nah, it's actually in the revenue. Our revenue department is collecting, it's in the warrants.
Okay.
It's the revenue department will be.
Alright, thank you. Next question, uh will this be a digital record?
Yes.
Okay, alright. If in the future the board wanted to create an ordinance for a more strict and uniform way. For owners to board up their vacant businesses, could this registration be used for that purpose as well?
Correct, it's public records, so yes, you can use that with the building with the unsafe buildings, correct?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And one of the items on this was exemptions. Certain businesses aren't required to pay any kind of fee for the registration of what you guys are trying to accomplish here. And there are three specific categories of business businesses that are exempted. Now, one of them are um nonprofits and that's the one I'm specifically asking about. So would there be a or is there a requirement for these businesses to ensure that if they claim one of these. Categories, that there is any kind of proof of maintaining that qualification? So if a business claims that they are, you know, they're claiming exemption because they're nonprofit, for instance. Is there anything about this registration process that you guys actually verify? You you're not.
Are you asking if they lose their nonprofit status, say a five oh one C three is no longer tax identified, will they steal?
Whether they lose it or they just don't actually have a nonprofit status.
Yes, yes, sir. Um the revenue department will verify that. They would, when they do the application, if it's non-exempt. If they provide the five oh one C like nine of members said, they wouldn't be part of the exemption.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Cooper.
Hi there. Y'all trying to match?
Oh, Carolina Blue Day.
Uh no. So will there be an online database? Or just uh or if someone were to ask for that information, how are we how are we um managing that information?
Um we'll talk with the um, you know, Ms. Renee, but um I know with um sector collection and the town's looking for new software. That would be part of the new software.
Uh and uh. How we how are we gonna manage like um like you said, businesses go in and out, you know, especially being a transient community with the military. Are we going to tax, are we going to um put the responsibility for being or be the owner of the um. The location or the actually the owner of the property or the business owner?
It would be the tenant.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot more tenant than owners in town, so it would be the tenant responsibility.
Right, but so how do we know when the tenant has vacated a property and?
More likely, I would, so they'll have to come file for water department with a commercial billing account.
Okay. And. You understand, they use this. Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh Alderman Thompson?
I just have one question. How far out do they have to put in a notification that they wanna have an event there?
No, this one isn't.
This is.
Next one is for her.
Okay. Next agenda item for that question. Are there any other questions?
I don't know.
Yes. Okay. I'm not entertain a motion to approve or deny um this administration or.
It's a consensus.
Yeah.
We have to do a public hearing with the no one.
Yes, that's consent.
Yes, ma'am. Not aware. It's just a consensus.
Well, I don't know, thank you. Are you guys okay with moving forward with this and letting?
Yeah, exactly. Please carry on with what you're doing phenomenally.
Awesome. You guys make things easy for me. Alright, well now move on to nine C and this is our draft ordinance. Uh for, come on back up here, Ms. Hickman. Our our local six parade groups demonstration and special events. Uh so this has been a process that's been uh, excuse me, that we started last year. Um because we wanted to smooth the transition um or the process. For hosting major events um and small events in our town. Um everything works better with with the checklist. Um and that way we can provide things uh equally amongst our residents. And so um Ms. Hickman, our police chief, our fire chief, um who else was involved in this? Several others were involved with putting this together and making sure um that that. Our events are now have a standard, so I mean, pass it to you, Ms. Hickman.
Okay, we'll start with the ordinance. Um the ordinance, the last time it's been revised was twenty-eight years ago, so nineteen ninety-five. So this was through revision of it. Um the biggest impact on the coverage sheet was that special event permits, anything seventy-five attendees or more would be reviewed by the special event advisory committee. One fifty of the attendees will be reviewed by the Board of Aldermen for for what they're not. Um the ordinance is more of um specify that pronouns. There was a lot of he's. You know, for reference to the police chief and the fire chief, so now the pronouns is he's and her. Um but that's the biggest impact and to answer your question, can I come to answer Alderman Thompson's question? Thirty days, thirty days, it's paid. I mean, I don't, you know, in a policy, I mean, it was done in fifteen, now it reference the special events. Then now this is this town owned property and the recreation. This is parks and rec. Private property, South Winds that all falls under the zoning ordinance for temporary events. This has nothing to do with private property. This is only for town owned property.
Again, just to reiterate with an example, if we were doing a uh food truck rodeo at South Wind. You would go to Ms. Hickman to apply for a zoning permit.
Correct.
If you wanted to use the boardroom to host a promotion ceremony, that would be a special event. So that would go to the committee that we're going to vote for.
No, not this one.
That go to the special events advisory committee for their approval or denial. So if there's a, at the rec center, if there's a baby shower and there are only twenty-five people, that wouldn't come before the board. But if they wanted to do the cancer walk, where we're gonna have over a hundred and fifty people present, that event would come before the Board of Aldermen for approval. So any large scale events come to us, a hundred and fifty over, any smaller events under one fifty would be approved by the special events advisory committee.
And to add that with a special event for the twenty-four upcoming budget, it's a hundred dollars. It's kept the same as previous years of the town for the permit cost.
Are there any questions? Alderman Cooper.
Um I noticed that there it says something about fees. Those fees that um they're not making specifically in here, but are they on our fees that you're bringing fees that you're from the year that?
Yes, ma'am. It's on there for the header dollars, yes, thank you.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Alright, so um thank you for clarifying that this is for town owned properties only. And uh there is one section in there that I wanted to point out and this. Does not apply to peaceful picketing and sidewalks and those kinda things. No abridging to the First Amendment, that kinda thing. Um and then. Piggybacking on the town owned property thing, uh so because the town owns the rec center building. But the county runs the building. I do see a list of steps required for the event organizer. Have we coordinated this with the county recreation department?
Yes, we have.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I have to do take it.
Yes, sir, we have. We worked with Mr. McMillan that oversees the playbill coming parks and rec. And so and Ms. Erica that works underneath um him as the special event coordinator said, yes, me and her work closely together to get this accurate. So if anybody goes up there, rips the rec center or goes to Mendoza Park, they send them directly over to me afterwards.
And I have a question that may not be related to this. And that is for, because in this policy, town sponsored events are excluded from these requirements. So and my uh my question is, what are town sponsored events? I mean, I I know obviously, you know, the Christmas tree lighting, those kinda things in the future, but. The reason I'm asking is because I do see the town logo being used for a lot of different events that aren't considered town sponsored events. And so to leave it confusion, is there a requirement that we have for when somebody uses our town logo for an event?
Yes, they should not be, if we are not, if they have not come to the Board of Aldermen and we have not endorsed this event saying that we are sponsored, they are not authorized to put our logo. On an event, they can say it's in Spring Lake, they can put our address out there, but to put our logo on there, they that they can't do that.
Yeah, thank you for clarification.
Uh one other thing with um, what did you just ask? What's your first question?
First question was about the rec center?
Yes. Um Erica, right, that's what I was, so I I wanted to make sure we highlight the fact that working with the county. Um they gave us all control over what events happen here. We pretty much just let them know what's going on if they go to the rec center to get one of our parks. Uh but because it has to coordinate with our streets, our police, our fire, um our planning, they did not want to impose any sort of restrictions on us. They gave us full autonomy to create um this ordinance, the committee, or not. They gave us full autonomy to create, um, this ordinance, the committee, or not committee, and, um, the fee structure, everything. So it's all, uh, decisions sealed by the events, like.
And then, uh, my last question is regarding the town-sponsored events. If someone does use our logo, you know, people assume that there's some kind of financial investment that the town has into those events now. But are people who go through this process and get approved then allowed? And is that an endorsement if the committee itself, uh, approves all these steps?
No, they, they have to come, anywhere that we're sponsoring the event or not, all events come through the committee. Um, so just because the event is approved, it just gives you authorization to have a hosting event in the city. It doesn't, uh, automatically make the town sponsor the event. We, if they don't come and specifically ask for sponsorship and we say, yes, we'll sponsor the event in whatever capacity, then we are not sponsoring the event. This is just a means of, of control, basically, so that we know what's happening in our, our, uh, community, police and fire are notified. So it's pretty much, uh, just more checks and balances, uh, to make sure we're covered.
Alright, thank you.
No, sponsorship, just because you can have an event here does not mean the event is sponsored, um, or even endorsed or can be participated by, and with the town of Spring Lake, it just gives you permission to host your event.
Um, I, the only other, um, thing I wanted to add was, uh, when this comes before us for, in its corrected form, I would like to have it, uh, the attorney's signature, uh, somewhere, a signature here to say that it is legally sound and they're within, um, you know.
I'll be having to take a look at it, but the ordinance has been put on y'all, by y'all, but I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at it, yes.
You're talking about the, the application of the whole application.
No, the ordinance, yeah, they say that we are, you know, we are surrender, um...
I can't, I can't sign the ordinance, I can just tell you.
Okay, well, I'd like you to look at it.
I can, yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna make sure, you know, we don't want to get sued, relied on, whatever, so, yes. But that's what they, they need.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Alright, so we will not entertain a motion, uh, to, this is a consensus. This is a consensus to move forward with a public hearing. You guys want thumbs up or likes? Go ahead, do a consensus. All in favor? You guys agree with this? Carry on, we will see you next time with the public hearing. Yes, okay. To Agenda Item B, um, and that's also in there is the bylaws to form the Special Events Advisory Committee. And, oh, did you guys get a chance to read them? They're pretty standard, uh, same as the rest of the other committees. Um, stipulating the, the event, or, excuse me, term limits, like, it's pretty standard, um, same as the other bylaws for it. No. We have to.
That's right.
Yeah.
Oh, so we need a motion?
Yes, we need a, a motion for this one, for the special, this is for the bylaws. For us to approve the bylaws for the Special Events Advisory Committee. And you guys have to tell them that shit. You had it on yours? They said the event, special event, to write a, 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 a... Yes.
No, this is in ordinance.
Yeah.
That's the draft.
That's all we're gonna say.
You got a different agenda for me. So we'll call it the agenda that you use, the I-type.
Welcome to the webinar. You have entered as a panelist and may now speak to any other organizers or panelists on the line.
I did get a chance to review that, sir.
But, uh, everybody's connected at this point about Mr. Burns with us. We've got Sharon, we've got Spring Lake Town Hall. Are we sharing? Yes, we're gonna have Mr. Burns. Um, get our video here shortly.
Here we go. That's down on the virtually, and it's awkward. Uh, Spring Lake Town Hall, how are you all down there?
While they're handling that, what happened was, my agenda got split, they split all three of them up. Um, so it says bylaws, town policy, special event permitting. Yeah, so mine got split, and I don't think the agenda was updated.
That's why you said G for...
Yeah.
Because my agenda...
Okay, so I got an agenda from you guys. So, let's switch back. Which one is it on? Oh, yeah, nine.
No, we're not here, go ahead, jump up.
We are going to have to table, um, the special events one, because the, it's all kind of rocky on that. So we'll table Agenda Item 9c. We'll bring it back one more time for our, um, work session meeting. If you guys are okay, we can just go ahead and approve that then, while it's our work session. Uh, so now we'll move on to Agenda Item, sorry, we need a motion to table that one. Alderman Placius?
Make a motion to go ahead and table, uh, the Special Events Committee.
Mayor Burton? Yes, Mayor Proton?
I say yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Both unanimous. We will now move on to, we've got three minutes. We can get this one done in three minutes. Uh, consideration of Ms. McLaughlin's reappointment, uh, as the Planning Board Representative. She has served us diligently for several years, and so I would like to entertain a motion to approve her. Ultimately, quit.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. McLaughlin's reappointment as the Planning Board Representative for Spring Lake.
Alderman Cooper?
I second that motion. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome back. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for your work. She's been with the planning board for how many years now?
I saw two terms.
So, and they speak very highly of her, so thank you again for, uh, the work you put in for the town of Spring Lake. So we now have two minutes before it is budget showtime. Uh, so we will briefly wait. If somebody wants to come and sing us a song, uh, to learn the time. We can wait for, we'll take a two-minute recess, um... Are they ready to go?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I know if they were to...
No, we're moving on.
Yes, okay, well, we are.
Paul, we do need to know that you're there. Somebody will...
We're here. Can you hear us?
And, and who's speaking in the background with us here?
That's you. David Irwin.
Hello?
Can you, can you hear us at all?
I can't, is that, um, who, who's, who's, um, who? Who's, is that Spring Lake?
It is.
Okay, Spring Lake Town Hall. Let's get you connected here. Give me one minute. Frank, Eric, can you get on this phone? Alright, Spring Lake, here on an open line here to folks in Dogwood and our LGC members. Uh, we're getting the treasurer connected, and then he will dabble us in in a moment. So it's one minute here to get connected. Good evening, uh, Underwood. Okay. Yes, you can hear it. So you're all working on it? Yep. We can't see you, but we can hear you, David. Uh, we'll take it at this point. We've got, um, Mr. Butler on the line with us, Mr. Philbeck, Secretary Marshall, Alderman Wood, uh, Sharon's with us virtually, and the treasurer is calling in. So as soon as we can get any, Secretary Penny, did you call in? Okay, so I don't believe Secretary Penny's with us. They'll give us one moment, everyone, and we're gonna get the treasurer in here, um, and we'll get started. Has anyone else called in that we haven't recognized yet? Have any members called in that we haven't recognized?
Are you ready, David?
Uh, yes, treasurer, we have a list begin, uh, we'll begin broadcast. Alright, folks, we're beginning broadcast.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Uh, thank you all for joining us. This is State Treasurer Dale Falwell. Uh, welcome all the, uh, panel members, both of this and the six o'clock budget. Uh, welcome the, uh, folks from Spring Lake, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Cindy, would you call the roll through?
Yes, sir. This is Cindy Aiken, Apostle, uh, Alderman Wood. Here. Rachel, and Secretary Marshall.
Here.
And Mr. Burns.
I'm here.
And Mr. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Philbeck.
Here.
And the treasurer. Here. All those, which is they virtually, and we, we know what's... Secretary Penny, did you call them again? Okay, well, Mark Kim absent, and Ms. Harvey and Ms. Hoffman are also absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Cindy. Uh, members, you've seen, uh, the agenda. They might have a conflict or an apparent conflict eventually regarding this public hearing. Clear and done. Staff will proceed.
Uh, this is Cindy Aiken, and also participating are Secretary Sharon Edmondson, and Debbie Tomasco and I, and Joe Vickley, our staff here at Dogwood. David Irwin, finance officer is present at Town Hall in Spring Lake. And, and Tiffany, um, right now, one person is also at Town Hall in Spring Lake. And if, if there are any speakers, uh, during the public hearing, at that time I can announce what the procedures are, but we'll skip that for now. Uh, I thought that Secretary Penny is with us, and Secretary Penny, I'm gonna make sure you can be, uh... Okay, correction, Secretary Penny is present. Treasurer Paul, do you have the order meeting sheet?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not have that with me. I delegate you to read that out, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, we are, the reason for this here, this public hearing is to, uh, present the Spring Lake Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget. The LGC is vested with the powers of the governing board of Spring Lake for the adoption of budgets and other financial matters pursuant to North Carolina, General Statute 159, dash 181(c). This public hearing is being held pursuant to General Statute 159-dash-12. Do allow comments by anyone who wishes to be heard on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget for the town of Spring Lake. Uh, Chairman Edgerton, you can declare the public hearing open.
Uh, I declare the public hearing open. I apologize, I didn't have that paragraph. And, uh, now that it's open, and we've had our meeting procedures, uh, now I'll turn the meeting over to Dave Irwin.
Good evening, everyone. Can, can y'all hear me, Edgerton?
Stand by.
I'm muted.
David?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. We cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, that's good. The LGC, Spring Lake Board of Alderman, uh, citizens, we come here tonight to have a, a public hearing. I'm just gonna go briefly over some items of the Spring Lake 2024 budget. The budget was done, of course, for General Statute 159 and X-11. Um, we, uh, identified a decimated revenue in our preparation for the fiscal year. We were conservative and the budget was formulated. Of all handling the financial obligations, we have, and all, all debt has been voted. The general fund for 2024 totaled eight million eighty-seven thousand fifty-three dollars. And that was slightly above what it was in the prior year. The proposed tax rate remains unchanged at sixty-five cents per hundred-dollar valuation. We, we budgeted a little over two-point-nine million dollars in property and personal tax revenue. Um, we do have one concern in this budget, not, not this coming year, but in two years, uh, the, the town is looking at how they will, um, work with the county. The county's changing the, the sales tax distribution method here, uh, starting in 2026. So that is, that is on everybody's mind, and they're, they're creating a list of items on how to mitigate that, that involves some sales tax revenue. In the budget measures, I didn't make it here, um, the storm water and sanitation enterprise fund, being, being the same, but the water sewer enterprise fund does have an increase. The increase was done in order to stay on track with the rates, rate recommendation, rate study that was done, um, in May of 2020 by McCall and Associates. We, we also have some increases from the water suppliers, so the, the rates were going up overall about ten percent. There is currently an AIA engineering study being done, which will look at all the sewer systems, infrastructure and operations, and we'll look at rates again, the, the, revisit those to look at what covers operations, what covers infrastructure, keep the replacement going forward. And this year, there, there is no pay increase for staff, although there was a, a bonus given, um, to staffs made. We, there have been some staff added to the general fund, uh, basically to support, um, inspection and regulation. There's a, a building inspector added, a fire inspector, um, code enforcement. Right now, in the proposed budget is, is in the police department, but we, uh, the town thinks that they're gonna do that contractually. So we will, we will change that in the adopted budget to move those landies from the police back to inspection so that they can do a vendor code enforcement. And with, and the budget right now, there's also an administrative police lieutenant position, um, included. And we also have an administrative assistant in the federal court department. There, one other position is in, um, the water department, it's water sewer operator.
It's kinda hard to hear you. Can we bring him the, that mic, so that the... Can you guys hear him okay?
David, you're gonna hear me all right?
We, we heard your summary. Is that the conclusion of your presentation of the budget, David?
Yeah, the, the one other thing I was gonna say was that one penny on the property tax rate equals about forty-five thousand dollars. That, that concludes my, my budget overview.
Chair, chair, are you ready for this?
So, at this time, I, I'm turning it back over to the chair.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. Stand by. Treasurer, are you with us? David, in Spring Lake Town Hall, are there any citizens that wish to make a public comment?
Anybody who wants to make a public comment, you can make it at this time. Here, I'll bring you the microphone.
Let me know, please, but I'll keep track of just how many, and just get one or two little requests. So do you have anyone?
Yes.
Yes?
We have.
Okay.
Come sit in this chair and talk with both microphones.
I don't believe they complete.
David? David?
Yes.
Hold on. If you just wait through the speaker, I mean, I'll just briefly interject to say if the speakers would just provide their name and address, as David calls you to the microphone, please limit your comments to the budget proposal, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you very much. And David, I just hope to keep track of the many like that. Okay, you may proceed.
My name is Frederica Savlin. My address is 1009 Lisa Circle, Spring Lake, North Carolina. And I'd like to thank you all. Thank the Local Government Commission, Ms. Beth Woods, as well as you, Ms. Sharon Edwards and Mr. David. Uh, my concern is about the water bills going up. This is consecutive three years. Uh, the flat rate, um, that it's going up is going to be about $15, and then that does not have anything to do with the tiers. So my concern, I'm totally against the water bills going up, as well as you stated, Mr. David, one penny on the property tax rate, which would be an increase of $45,000. Not understand, I don't think the citizen understand that. So does that mean that our property tax is going up as well? As well as for our public safety? I think that we need to have a lieutenant in our police department. We've always had a lieutenant until we cut back on that lieutenant for our public safety. So that is one of my concerns with the budget. The water bills, and I understand at the special meeting to play catch-up, they're talking about maybe about 40 years. Um, I look at the demographics of the town, and fixed income, and that's just a flat rate. Anything over that $15 is the water that you use, which is three thousand gallons. So my concern, I'm totally against the rate of the water bill, as well as it looks like it's going to be a penny on our property tax, as well as I feel like we need a lieutenant in our police department for our public safety. I want to thank you all for the work that you did when I called in on 2012, 2019, 2020. I do have my letter from you all, so thank you very much for the job that you've done for this town of Spring Lake and our citizens. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Savlin. Okay, David, give, anyone else?
Let me just clarify. I was just giving information, there is no property tax increase as a penny.
Okay, what were you saying about that penny? So I can understand.
Well, there's 45 cents, or every one of the pennies of the 45 cents represents $45,000 worth of revenue.
The penny's on where?
The tax rate's 60 cents. It's just a figure. If you increase the tax rate one penny, that would raise $45,000, but we're not increasing, you are not increasing, not changing the tax rate.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Do you have anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Yes, we have one other citizen coming.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. What a pleasure it is to share the responsibilities that rest with the state and those responsibilities that rest with the town of Spring Lake. I'm Marvin Lucas, and I think I share the interest of both. So indeed, I want to commend those of you who have worked cooperatively over the last few years. It's been a real challenge with the finances in the town of Spring Lake, and this board is totally to be commended for their cohesive efforts that they have really worked diligently to achieve. I also want to commend those of you at the state level who have worked to assist and to guide this comprehensive board, as they have worked in the best interest of the citizens of Spring Lake. Spring Lake is moving forward, and we look forward to continuing to move with a balanced budget. So I commend this group.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have anyone else?
David, are any of the elected officials are present, the mayor or anyone else? Did they want to make a comment?
Yes, again, echoing the sentiments, and I do believe I can speak for this entire board when I say thank you so much for the diligent work that you guys have put in to right the wrongs that's been happening in Spring Lake for some time. We again want to commend the staff for their adherence to a very conservative behaviors that assisted in us getting this budget back on track. I want to make sure we highlight Ms. Deborah Mack and Ms. Sylvia for their efforts. They are absolute rock stars in our finance department, and I really want to thank David Irwin and Tiffany Anderson for their diligent work. If it was not for their expertise, we would not be able to be in the position that we're in. They took us from coming into office with a $1.6 million across the board in our funds to right now having a stable, all of our funds stabilized in over $12 million in our general fund right now. So I really, really appreciate it. And we have some shining bells and whistles that we parked out back for the community to see our new purchases that came from this fiscal responsibility that the staff, the board, and our finance and LGC staff exercised throughout these past, what, 18 months? Or so, since we've been here? So again, thank you so much. Alderman Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say thank you to our onsite staff with the LGC, the staff, Mr. Williams, who's been guiding us. I think we asked him to step in the office, and it's probably been about eight or nine months, and he has just been really doing a great job. So I want to thank also the board, who really did a deep dive on this budget and cut a lot of waste. So it's been a lot of work, and I'm really proud of this budget that we have here before us.
We will now pass this off to Alderman Fasios.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to David and to Tiffany, to Ms. Sharon Edmondson, to the rest of the LGC body, that, you know, there has obviously been hiccups along the way, but this has honestly been a learning experience that I think has been to the betterment of the town of Spring Lake and its citizens. So I just had a couple of things I wanted to highlight real quick regarding some of the financial updates that I think the citizens and the state need to be aware of, because this highlights the cohesive nature of the work that we've been doing, like Representative Lucas had mentioned. In 2021, Spring Lake's bank accounts had $1.6 million. Today, $12 million. In 2021, Spring Lake was not balancing its checkbook. Today, our bank reconciliations are up to date. 2021, the town had taken $1.8 million from the water sewer fund in order to balance its budget, and today, the town has replenished the water sewer fund of all funds taken. In 2021, the state took over Spring Lake's checkbook, and today, the state has been giving us great reports, and we have optimism and possibility that by the end of this year, early next year, we can have our town finances back into the right hands. We appreciate, again, the work, the diligent work that David and his staff, Ms. Sharon Edmondson and her staff have been doing on behalf of Spring Lake residents. This has been a game changer for us, and you have brought back so much stability that has been needed on our town board and in our town staff, and for, on the benefit of our town citizens. So thank you all for your hard work. That's it.
Any other comments from the board?
That definitely sums it up. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, back to you.
Thank you. Yes, the Treasurer, I'm asking staff here, do we have anybody online, virtually, that wished to make a comment or?
I received Mary.
Okay.
Virtual comment.
Okay. For virtual comments? Do we have no comments submitted ahead of time to share? So last call, David, down at Spring Lake, last call for anyone else that would like to speak. And the Q mayor and the, and Board Aldermen and all the women members for your comments. Thank you so much. Okay.
Cindy, Cindy, this is the Treasurer. I just wanted to thank the staff and the board and the mayor for making this jump up on the table today, and especially Sharon. Thank you.
Okay. Chair Falwell, I believe you are ready for you to close the public hearing and that we can wrap up.
Yeah, hearing no further comments. I'm now deemed the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 23-24 of the town of Spring Lake, as conducted by the Local Government Commission, to be closed, and without objection, we will adjourn.
All right. Time is noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, members, don't you see, and all that's been like. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. David, we appreciate you. Awesome. That was something.
Can I, can I do one thing?
You sure can.
Sharon Edmondson lost her dad last week.
Oh, no.
So that's why she wasn't here. It was, it was actually in the veterans home here in Fayetteville last week.
Please sit down. Awesome. So we are going to move on to, matter of fact, before we move on, I would like to take a point of privilege. Ms. Lillian Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you please approach your podium? I switched, sorry, Lillian. My agendas are all twisted up today, so let me go back to the other agenda. Thank you.
We added some, we added the tax agreement.
Nine E. So.
Yes, that's why I can't understand nine E. So it really needs to be the new E.
Right. So my mind was twisted. So we are on nine E. We will do our permanent county tax collection agreement. Mr. Williams?
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to the attorney.
All right.
He has done some homework on this, and.
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. This is the agreement that all of you have seen before, looked at it quite a bit. There were some comments from Ms. Deborah Mack. She had some suggested revisions. I will tell you, in consultation with my esteemed colleague, Mr. Moorefield at the county level, what he has said is, one, the Board of Commissioners for the county has already voted against similar request of changes from other municipalities in the county, so they're not going to approve this request. And I don't have the.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Two, that even if they were to try to approve the change, which they wouldn't, they might have time because on their June 19 meeting, and then they don't have a meeting until August, so we would be outside of any current agreement, we'd be floating out there, which is not good as your tab attorney for two months. And then number three, as the attorney, as the town attorney, I understand what Ms. Mack was trying to do, because that's what the other municipalities were trying to do as well, which was actually like have a hammer home, set amount of money that was coming in every single week or month of a time period they kicked. However, because each municipality has such vastly different amounts coming in, they specifically, they, meaning the county, specifically built this in to have flexibility, but then after we get into this agreement, we can go back, or they can go back, each municipality can work this out with us. Now, as far as what Ms. Mack suggested at the end, having a sign for, or a signature line for the finance director and one for me, that's fine, because we can just literally just, just like she did, just add that in. I agree with Mr. Moorefield for this particular agreement. I don't know that it's necessarily required, but I'm sure me and Mr. Ryan would be happy to sign. So as town attorney, I highly recommend you go ahead and approve this tonight, even though, respect what Ms. Mack was trying to do. We really need to get this done tonight.
Oh, I'm a good one. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Porter. Um, yes, I had a long conversation with Ms. Mack, and I understand that if we don't sign this, they will refuse to collect our taxes, but I do want to make sure we know that this violates General Statute 159-dash-28. You can look it up, but anytime there is an obligation for a written contract, we have to have pre-audit certification. And I'm not one of those people who's going to say, well, the other people agree to do it. That's not how we do business anymore. There's also a concern in the agreement that says that you can go to 3E, and it says, "Tax Administrator, County Manager, and Town Manager or Administrator will agree from time to time in writing as to how the residents collected for the town. Under this agreement, shall be remitted to the town and about such other administrative matters that shall be necessary to effectuate this agreement." I'm, I'm not, I want to get them done as soon as possible, because we're not going to do it from time to time, because what that means is they can hold our monies and collect interest on it and decide when they want to send it, and then they could forget to send it. So I think there needs to be a specific time period. I like what Ms. Mack suggested, which is send it weekly, or if anything, they collect anything five thousand or more. I want us to collect our, I want us to get interest on our money, not the county, especially considering, you know, we really need to be watching our money. So I want us to get them on a reading agenda as soon as possible and have a schedule for when these funds are distributed to us. I'm not happy with the time.
That, I guess, the first thing, they were, the county was fine with that pre-audit certification, so the, what Ms. Mack suggested, which is what's dangerous, a written contract, you know, they should probably get there anyways. So that, the county's agreed to, and a signature line. So a signature line for Mr. Irwin, saying, you know, pre-audited, and a signature line for the segment seasonally sufficient. That's what the email exchange was between Mr. Moorefield and Ms. Audrey, I can't recall. But yes, I agree with you, and that's what, in my conversations today with the county, that's what they want to do, but they just, because all of the municipalities have signed this, they just want to be able to have the flexibility, because obviously, the tax collection rate for Spring Lake is different, the city pay will differ from the town who builds. But yes, I think that's their goal as well. And I told Mr. Moorefield, if they withheld our money for too long, we know we're to lose.
We've got David and Tiffany on our side. Don't do that. All right, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Alderman Fasios? Alright, uh, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Alderman Fosios?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for the collection of taxes between Cumberland County and the town of Spring Lake.
Okay, just to clarify, could that motion be with, with adding the, what Ms. Mack suggested?
With the amended changes.
For pre-audit certification.
For pre-audit certification.
And town certificate.
And attorney.
So moved.
My apologies, Al.
Just a second. Mayor Porter?
I second.
Any discussion? Alderman Lackman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I fully came here tonight after reading all of this. I, I would say a adamant firm, no. The county has to do better. We are trying to do better for our residents out here. And, and the county to do this has us open peril. I, I. Mr. Williams, I, I, I do hope that, that you had some conversations with these folks. Mr. Porter, the, the county is our attorney to, to fight for us, to fight for the residents of Spring Lake. I, I'm, I'm just sick to my stomach tonight in regards to this. So, that's all I wanna say, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, this came about because, and this is just for clarification. This is the purpose, the purpose of this is the county collects all Spring Lake taxes and then the county disverses the taxes back to the town. And so, um, there's been an agreement for years on this. And an important note is that there is no change in the rate. So, obviously, they're collecting our taxes. They keep a portion of it, I believe it's one point seven-five.
There's actually a change. It went from one point seven-five to point seven-five.
Went down.
That, that's what initiated all of this. We found a tax change.
B, which is the original amount, I'm sorry. So, okay, well, thanks for that clarification. But this came up, I believe, because Alderman Cooper had asked for this specific agreement. And was, Ms. Cooper, was it that they didn't have an agreement on file or it was outdated?
It was outdated, yes.
So, alright, thank you.
And with this following up on this, it's actually saving the town, um, twenty thousand dollars every year on our tax collection with this change. So, it's very good for the town. But again, uh, we wanna make sure things are ironclad and, and legal. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Alright, the motion carried unanimously. Uh, now, I will take that point of privilege. I'm sorry, Ms. Lillian, can you come to the podium now? This is a very special time. You guys know I love the feel-good moments, so this is super important.
Surprise.
Surprise, and we have to do it as a surprise because somebody's really busy.
I'm paying homage to Chatham, the Spring Lake Fire Department. We came up tonight to pay tribute and honor our chief, Jason Williams. Over the years, he's been with the Spring Lake Fire Department. He's held every position you can hold, has done every job, has led us, what, now for about four years? Five. And has improved our department, improved our training, our manning. He has been instrumental in, uh, spearheading the, uh, construction of a new fire station, the purchase of two new engines. In all of the years that I've been with the Spring Lake Fire Department, this is the first time that we actually had two new engines at the same time where we weren't running one engine until it wore out. And we also had the, uh, purchase of the newer ladder truck. And then on top of that, if that wasn't enough, he also assumed the position of veteran town manager, which in itself is enough to drive you out of your mind.
Absolutely.
Those of us in the fire department, all the members of the department, wanted to take this opportunity to, uh, let everyone know how we feel about the chief and give him a small token to demonstrate how we feel. Chief, if you would.
So, you gotta tell us what you got.
It's open for our appreciation.
Hold up. Chief Fire Department, come on and say thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Come on, guys.
Oh, that's so cool.
Come on, everybody. Come on, come on.
Come on up here.
I'll pull up for a picture. They're gonna take from that side here. Surprise to us. Gee, you're a hot girl.
It's not like summer, unless you guys have any, like, any kind of more of the places.
Y'all squeeze in.
I get a picture over here.
Do the Alderman wanna be in?
Where is it? Where is it?
So, there's a, a, a story about a bucket list that our esteemed chief manager, um, had and there were several items on that list and he was actually told that, you know, he was dreaming too big in order to accomplish the, what, was it five things on the list?
It was five-year plan.
Five-year plan, and it was crazy. How can you do this? How can you make this happen? And did you make it happen?
Uh, I made it happen.
He made it happen. That included the new ladder truck, the new fire station?
The people to pay the, the engines. I mean, it's everything with the town, but I got such a great working guy back there that, you know, they do anything for this town. They, they work their tails off for this town. Um, so they, they made me look good. It's not me, it's those guys back there. They're the ones going out there on the calls and everyone showing up in the middle of the night because you fell down or whatever. They're, they're, they're the reason. I ain't got none. It's not me, it's those guys.
So, I know we've been here for a little.
And they know, they know how much I think that around.
That's why we had to keep it quiet because he would have thrown a fit.
Very true.
Alright, so we will carry on with not G, because that's the one we're gonna do. So, we'll move on to nine F, uh-huh. I just don't know if that's for it. Um, just a couple of quick updates. Um, I had a chance to, uh, attend the North Carolina Mayor's Association's, uh, board retreat. Um, there was, several great things came out of that, a couple of legislative updates, um, pretty much setting the stage for what's gonna happen in this upcoming year. Um, and we'll be back to do a bit more planning, uh, in the fall. So, I also wanted to let you guys know about the Hillside Cemetery, just a few updates. Again, it is out of the wheelhouse of, um, acting as the town to, to do anything as far as maintenance, upkeeps, or upgrades. Um, but, uh, myself and the Sand Hills Family Heritage Association have been discussing the potential, um, for them to actually come in and manage the facility. Again, this is all a discussion. Uh, we are, we are already moving forward with a process that have it listed, uh, as a historical cemetery so that it will not, uh, be condemned. We won't allow that to happen. So, we're getting it listed on the historical registry, um, and then, uh, I'll keep you updated as things progress. But just so that you know, um, uh, we found a way to protect Hillside Cemetery. I didn't tell the people in May, Happy Birthday, last time, so Happy Birthday May people, that was Alderman Cooper on May sixth, fourth. I was close. May the fourth be with you. So, I just wanted to highlight that. Of course, the Fort Liberty name change, uh, that was a big deal. I don't know about any other, the veterans that attended, myself, Alderman Fosios, Alderman Thompson, and Alderman Lackman all attended, but when they cased the colors for Fort Bragg, it kinda had a, well, stab in my heart. I wasn't expecting that, but it was really emotional. Um, I grew up at Bragg. I, that's, that's where I, you know, became an adult, uh, Fort Bragg. So, um, now Fort Liberty and I'm super excited about the name change. It's a powerful name. I've just gotta get used to calling it Fort Liberty. Uh, and again, it's hurricane season as of June first, uh, through November thirtieth. So, please, you guys lived here through one hurricane season to a couple hurricane seasons and we were devastated. Um, so I, I'm sure, I'm preaching to the choir when I tell you to prepare, 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 uh, pray for the best, but I don't want you to prepare for the worst. So, I, with that being said, I will move on to Mayor Porter.
I just want to say that I'm very excited about the five K cancer run that we're gonna be sponsoring in Spring Lake. It, it's going to be fabulous because I'm sure everyone knows someone that either has cancer, battle cancer, or maybe passed away to another side, but this is for you. So, I wanna thank this, uh, Donald Martin for coming out and doing an awesome presentation, um, and school is out. Um, and I'm very excited. And I don't have any further things. Alderman Fosios?
Thank you, Mayor. We have the next appearance committee meeting this Wednesday here in this room at four P M. So, if any residents, uh, or town staff want to be in attendance to find out what we're doing to better serve our community and its beautification, then you're welcome to attend four P M here in this room on Wednesday. And the next thing is, I'm proud to, uh, uh, make public is, uh, we are getting ready to, I've been working on a grant, uh, for our town, um, for. Sorry. Oh, you're fine. We're working on a grant for our town to, uh, the purpose of it being to, uh, out of respect, I'll just be quiet.
And the door.
Alright. I remember those District Three fire calls. That was volunteering the chief. Alright, uh, been working on a T-Mobile grant for Hometown. It's a fifty thousand grant that's given to towns, uh, quarterly and, uh, I'm waiting on letters of support for that and the blessing of the L G C who has already been, I've been, already been talking to. The purpose of the grant that I'm working on is for creation of three murals downtown that are gonna be completely paid for by this grant, uh, so that we can get the ball rolling on beautification here in Spring Lake. And, uh, again, I'm waiting on letters of support and the blessing of, uh, the L G C. I've already been in connection with David Irwin, our finance manager. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Alderman Thompson? Um, the only thing I have is, um, we have the copse conversation where we hear at six P M on the twenty-second of June. And then also, they have a reading camp at W T Brown right now. Um, it has already started, but they do have some dates remaining from the nineteenth to the twenty-second and from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth. And that's Monday through Thursday from eight A M to three P M and it's to promote literacy and, um, love for reading. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Alderman Lackman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight's focus is on the military and the veterans. So, uh, as we get ready, June fourteenth, for most civilians out there, it's called Flag Day. For those of us that have served in the Army, it's our birthday. Two hundred forty-eight years old. So, uh, to the Army, Happy Birthday. Um, also, I'd like to, to, to highlight the Fort Liberty Walk is done every evening at sunset and it's six tenths of a mile down. It's a, it's a very nice walk that you go through, talks about from Camp Bragg in nineteen eighteen up till the renaming, calling it Fort Liberty. We have one of our older women here that is going to be the veteran of the day. She is going to, to go out there and, and lead the walk. Uh, it's coming up.
Fifteenth of July is.
Fifteenth of July, she will be out there. So, every evening, the, the general is charged that this, this be done and it's at sunset. So, every day, sunset changes during the wintertime. It's much earlier in the summer. Well, it's, it's close to nine o'clock. But I wanna highlight that. Um, just secondly, this one's for you. I'm gonna come see you. November fourth, I already talked to Mr. Lewis in regards to getting the, the recreation center, but the Military Veterans Affairs, part of Spring Lake, will be hosted a Veterans Service Day. We, I am looking to solicit the Veterans Service Officers to assist veterans with having an event here to assist them with their VA claims that they're looking to do. So, we've got that that we're planning. So, this special use permit, this will be one that, that the town is going to, to put on. Uh, the board had voted on it, did a consensus recently in regards to that. So, I'll be getting with you on that. And then I'd like to, to recognize that D M W four-five-four-two, which, that's one that I'm a member of, uh, the suspension is open, they're back open and things will be happening with that. We're looking forward to Commander Turner putting her application in. The Cantina is closed, but the organization itself is there and, and the military services, uh, are here to support the veterans. So, um, if anybody has any questions, please send me afterwards. If you're a V S O and you would like to participate, or you know a V S O that would like to participate, please, uh, get with me so that we can get this rolling. The, the idea is November fourth to be able to, to service the veterans that are in our community. Mayor, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Cooper?
Thank you. Uh, so first, it's summer. The children are out and summer meals have started. Uh, they begin on June fifth and they end July twenty-eighth. And, uh, at the Spring Lake Recreation Center, Monday through Thursday from, you know, from, from eleven to eleven-twenty, they have to eat on site. And then we also, Spring Lake has a summer meals bus. Uh, at the library, the Spring Lake Library on Lake Tree Boulevard, it's one of our Lake Tree Boulevard, uh, that's from eleven-thirty to eleven-fifty. And then they move on to Spring Lake Fire Station number eleven from twelve to twelve-twenty, Monday through Thursday. There are no meals on, on Friday. And you can go on the website and look at what we do there. We have it for June and July. So, please, we were, uh, we did a lot of work to get, to make sure that it gets for playing in the summer meals. Uh, secondly, I will be traveling to Asheville. No, I don't like that. For the Rockin' Island League Municipal Board Directors from June twenty-eighth to the thirtieth. Um, and also, I'll be traveling to Tacoma, Washington for the National League City Summer Board Leadership. Um, that's part of my duty as a small cities council member from July seventeenth to the twenty-first. I do wanna highlight that none of these scripts are any calls to the town.
Right. That's it? Awesome. Mayor, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor, yours?
I ain't taking on that much. Uh, just like I always do, um, thanks for the staff. The staff's been working their butts off and I appreciate it. Um, you know, it's, it's just amazing what these guys can really do and girls. I miss everybody. Um, thanks, thanks to you guys for at least putting a little bit of dust in me to, to keep it on, on the road. So, that, that's good. So, I just appreciate that. Uh, David, thanks for all you've done and all that stuff. Good to see you, sir, over there. Um, but that, that's about it. We have, got some other stuff coming up, um, next, next time. We're gonna have a big bunch of celebration, but we're all.
Uh, I have nothing of, of, for public consumption. I've answered a few questions throughout the week and the last couple of weeks. Um, but, uh, less than anything other than this was really, uh, good meeting.
So, if there is nothing for, those are, turn these lights on, yes. They already know it's time to go. Um, happy Pride Month, happy Juneteenth, that's happening on.
Monday. No, Monday.
Father's Day is on Sunday. Uh, so happy Father's Day to all of those.
It's, it's Sunday, isn't it? Yeah. All the stores are sold out, guys.
So, um, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Lackman?
Mayor, the motion to adjourn?
Mayor Porter? Any discussion?